We actually re-convened our meeting. We were meeting an executive session since six o'clock to discuss collective bargaining and also contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Our first quarter of business tonight is, and you're privileged, especially you students out there, you probably don't always get to see this, tonight's when we reorganize our school committee. So every year after the elections, we reorganize and they try to get rid of me as chairman. The last few years it hasn't worked, I've been as chairman, but I think tonight I might be out. So at this point, we turn it over to the superintendent and I, we switch seats for a few minutes until we vote for their chair.
Mr. Paul, is this one the government that is worse?
I missed not hitting the javelin. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And he really is joking. They don't try to get rid of you many years, so they should know. So as Mr. Webster said, by policy, the reorganization of the school committee takes place and I will be acting as chairman just until the newly-elected chairperson is identified and that person will assume the chair immediately following the reorg. So at this moment, I will take nominations for the chair of the school committee. Does anyone have a nomination they'd like to put on the table?
I don't know how excited or overly interested he is, but I know that Mr. Venezia will be beginning his 16th year, I believe, on the school committee this year, 15th year on the school committee this year. And so I would like to nominate Mr. Venezia as our new chairman.
So we have a nomination for Mr. Venezia as the new chair of the school committee with a second. Any discussion?
Does he accept?
Oh, does he accept? Sorry.
I accept as long as you guys let me know if anyone's voting against me.
I don't think I'll vote against you.
I accept.
He accepts, so is there any discussion at this time?
I just do want to say again, one of the most, one of the largest responsibilities the chairman has is having to sign all of the high school diplomas every year, and that's just one of the reasons I want to go. Because the superintendent and the principal have stamped signatures and the chairman doesn't. He has to sign all of the diplomas. It's a big job.
If we had any more than 175 students, I wouldn't do it either.
Is your signature a veto?
Yes.
Oh. We have a request to move, move the question.
Yes.
So at this point in time, I'm going to entertain a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Venezia as our chair?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you. Switching seats again.
Do you want to switch the names around?
You should.
Okay, we're going to quickly take a couple of minutes to finish the reorganization. We need to have a vice chair nominated. Do you hear any nominations for the position of vice chair?
I would like to nominate Mr. Bowers. I think Mr. Bowers has done a great job as vice chair for the last 37 years and I would like him to continue in that position. So I'd nominate Mr. Bowers.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Bowers, how do you feel about this nomination? Will you serve?
I will serve.
So we have a motion by Mr. Webster and a second by Mrs. Briano. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. We need a nomination for secretary of the committee. Do you have a nomination for secretary?
I would like to nominate you.
Nomination, do we have a second?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Bowers. So we have a motion to nominate Mrs. Ericetti, a second by Mr. Bowers.
Janine, that's Dr. Orketi.
Dr. Orketi. You knew that was called. I'll say, I'll say Dr. Orketi and it's the last time I'm going to say it. Janine?
Aye.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. Now the all-important legislative representative, that was me for the last couple of years, I did absolutely nothing with that, but I know that there are some responsibilities associated with it. So I would like to nominate Dr. Ericetti.
To the position of legislative representative.
We have a motion by Mr. Webster, we have a second by Mr. Bowers for Miss Ericetti.
Oh.
Okay, do you accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. So we have the offices. We also need to reappoint the subcommittee representatives and the first one is the Secondary School Building Committee Representative. I've been doing that for the last, I think, five years. I'd like to stay as the Secondary School Building Committee Representative. I don't think we need a vote for this, do we? Do we vote on these?
No.
We have a vote, okay. Any objection to me staying on as the representative of the school committee? No. The policy subcommittee, we have two members on the policy subcommittee. I think we've had Mr. Bowers who's been there for quite some time and I think, which is Janine, right? Janine and Briano. Do you guys want to stay with that?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Any objection? Anybody else interested? So for the policy subcommittee, we have Miss Briano and Mr. Bowers. For the athletics subcommittee, I've been doing that for the last 14 years and I'm going to also be doing it for nine or 10 years. I'd like to stay with the athletics subcommittee. Anybody else interested?
I would also.
Okay, so those who, those who want us to stay the same, Mr. Webster and myself. Communications subcommittee.
It's been inactive because it's been the feeling that we're doing a pretty good job of communications and we don't need a committee in place at this point. I would suggest we continue without the communications subcommittee unless someone attacks the.
Anybody have a recommendation otherwise?
I would say.
All right. Evaluation subcommittee.
I want to.
Yeah, that right now is me and Janine.
Janine, how do you feel about that? Karen's volunteered, do you want to?
I would think Janine would, unless she doesn't want to do it, I would like to see Janine.
No, I would like to see her.
Because I think that's a good way to learn about, so I'd say Janine.
Janine and Karen?
Now, the one thing, there is a meeting this Friday for that at 10:45 to go over the, to go over the self-evaluation. I will give you the summary of the results, okay? All right.
Okay?
10:45 here.
And finally, the finance committee. These are the chair and the vice chair of the board of selection, the chair and the vice chair of the school committee, the finance committee, as well as the administrator, superintendent of schools, director of finance and operations, and the town, it's her head.
Finance director.
Finance director and the town administrator. They all meet every couple of months to sit down and discuss various issues, mostly dealing with budgets, so those positions are automatically the chair and the vice chair, so that I'll be quicker myself.
You might, you might want to take a vote on the slate of subcommittee members.
Okay, the entire slate?
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of subcommittee members as discussed here at three.
A second? Okay, with motion by Mr. Webster, a second by Mr. Bowers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. So that concludes our reorganization for the next, for next year.
Nine minutes.
Nine minutes, very good.
That's good, the Bruins are playing. But we're not going to let that get in the way of a good meeting today. I'd just like to thank Mr. McKay and his faculty, staff, and all the students who are hosting this meeting tonight, we really appreciate it. Every year we do get out to each of the schools, all the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school. We've been holding our regular meetings at the town hall for the last six months or so. So we want to thank them and before we get to Mr. McKay, I just want to give student representative Matt Leighton an opportunity to present his report.
I still appreciate it. Congratulations to Mr. Venezia.
Thank you.
Election as chairman. Tonight, pretty busy, lots going on for high schools that time of year. First off, we'll start with sophomores. Students will begin their end cast mathematics testing tomorrow and Wednesday. Tomorrow night, 12 students in the top 5% of the senior class will be attending the North Shore Chamber of Commerce Honors Scholar Dinner at Frank Croft DoubleTree Hotel in Danvers. There'll be a total of 33 public and private schools from the North Shore attendance and well over 1,000 students attending. On Thursday night, the National Honor Society will conduct their newest members during the annual National Honor Society induction taking place at seven in the auditorium. Last Thursday, Coach Carey won his 726th career baseball game, making the most winningest coach for baseball in Massachusetts High School baseball history. This year, Mark's Coach Carey scored 99 seeds in coaching the team, so big congratulations.
Applause. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't hold a seat here.
On Friday night, E-Mark held its annual spring dance in the high school cafeteria. Members of the interaction club volunteered for the event. There was a large turnout and everyone had a great time. Last Monday began the two-week process of administering AP exams. Exams are being held in the gymnasium in library. Testing will wrap up on Thursday. Also last Monday, senior prom tickets went on sale and they'll be at sale until Friday. The cost of a ticket is $150 per couple. Prom will be held on June 2nd, which is very comfortable. Senior council officers collections will be held on Thursday. This upcoming Friday, the annual variety show will be held at the very last time in the Daniel Shay Auditorium. The show will feature an array of acts including notorious acapella group, the high school chorus, the jazz band, piano students, and masters. Tickets can be purchased for $5. Next Wednesday, the annual spring concert will be held at seven o'clock in the auditorium. Next Thursday, the annual spring, a student spring recognition night will be held at 6:30. For sports, today, the boys had seen voices in the field and came out with a 4-1 victory. The girls, Tennessee had a match last Wednesday against Kentucky and came out with a 3-2 win. Boys across had a game last Tuesday against Kentucky and came out with a 4-10 loss. Tonight, they had a game at seven o'clock at Uppercryton. Girls across had a game last Thursday against Molden and did come out with a 16-2 win. As mentioned, the baseball team won against Newburyport 3-2 the last Thursday, giving Coach Carey his 726th win. They have a game tomorrow against Hamilton Runaway. The softball team had a, had a game Friday against Manchester Essex, they came out with a 15-1 run. The girls track team had a meet Wednesday against Newburyport coming out with a 98-47 win. They are currently in first place in division, kind of a good record, and just found out that they are Cal champs this year, so congrats to the girls team. The boys team also had a meet last Wednesday against Newburyport but came out with a 67-77 loss. And for my student work tonight, I brought in a physics lab that we created as a group of students. Purpose of the lab was to find conservation of mechanical energy. So what it do was, as a group, we worked together to create the lab, finding a variety of mechanical energies for our group. We found kinetic energy and then we also found mechanical energy of a toy train going down a hill, so to measure the starting point and the end point, what the velocities were to figure out the kinetic. So all passes through. It was a great experience, you know, it's different creating your own lab when you're given to it to find it, so really took a lot of time just to get everything sorted, but it was a great experience as well.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions by the committee?
Is this your task?
Um, no.
We'll be back one more time.
We will, me and Madison will be back for a dual, uh, dual year.
May. Great, so before you graduate, excellent.
Can I just add, in the committee, his first vote was the town election.
Oh, you voted, oh, you voted. Excellent, congratulations. That's an exciting time. We'll be popping Jerry, we'll be popping him the next week, soon as you're ready to vote. This is an interesting laboratory, what, closest I've gotten to physics is watching this, thank you. This is very good, very good. Couple of comments, I mean, Coach Frank Carey, for those of you who don't know him, I don't know if he has all the children or not, but Coach Carey has been here for 49 years, I think 47 years as the head coach at North Reading High School. It's the only place he's ever coached. He really is a legend in North Reading, he truly is. And he hit the 726th win and passed a coach, a one-time coach, the coach of women's high school. And he's still coaching and he hasn't given us any indication that he's just going to stop. I think he's won six state championships, the most recent coming two years ago. The overall sports program, I know Matt had talked about the girls track team, they didn't take any championships, but the last couple of years, last several years, we've had tremendous, tremendous success with our athletic teams. And there's a standing there in capital, called the Dalton standings, for Division Three teams. And last year they finished fifth, no?
Sixth.
Sixth last year, we're in fifth place this year, so we've done 40 schools. Out of 40, 40 schools, so we've done really, really well.
We also have, I don't know exactly what, another two girls in the track team that have the best marks in the state for any division, Division 1, 2.
Zero hats.
I think it's, this?
Yes, Emily Marie, Sandra.
And, um, Julia Valenti.
Julia Valenti.
So that's quite an achievement when you consider you have schools that have 4,000, 5,000 students and we have two students who have the best marks of the, of any student list.
And keep an eye on this year's softball team, I think.
Yes, they're very good.
Very good, very good. Okay, at this point, Matt, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Just wanted to turn it over to Mr. McKay and I understand we have a presentation from the Hood School.
Thank you, welcome to the Hood School, everyone. Happy to have you back. It's still a great event, enjoy happy day, get to show what we do value, our families come out, our families come out, our students come out, share, it's a wonderful thing to do, so we're going to start off just cool. Reminder of what our philosophy is here at the Hood School, we firmly believe that hand in hand, together we can, so that's our philosophy of everyone working together, students, staff, parents, school council, school committee, to achieve the goals that we set out for the school. So thank you for everything that you do for us and for supporting us and all of our endeavors. I hope you see some great things tonight, I know you will, and just forward the showcase and the quote. So, hey, Jen, tonight, we're going to start off with our student council, they'll introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what they do on a daily basis. We'll talk about the Box grant, we have, we have Quinnlin here and Mrs. Meara to talk about how that got started and what the students are doing. We have co-teaching presentation, we have a video that Mrs. Hogan and Mrs. Cosby filmed, so we'll be showing that. Then we have some technology integration, so we have two teachers virtually appearing here and they're co-teaching in the virtual world, so it's, we get ready for the Bruins game after that. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kinsey and Mrs. Curris to talk about our student council, might dip friends up as well.
Every year, the fifth graders in their introduction to government votes, each classroom gets to vote on two, a male and a female member of the student council, and so we work on doing charities throughout the year. And these are our members.
Hi, my name is Amy Corney. Flash Goldbeck.
DJ Niasse.
Julia Powers.
Julia Missvalle.
I'm Jackie Kinsey, I'm one of the advisors.
And we have one other, Jordan Rudolph, who's on the roommate tonight.
As an introduction to civics, we hold the student council election at the start of the school year. Students who are interested in running for office make posters and must give a speech. Each classroom votes for two representatives, creating a student council made up of five to six individuals. Once elected, the student council meets neatly with the teacher supervisors, Ms. Curris and Ms. Kinsey.
Together, we discuss fundraising and community service in addition to planning fundraising fund dates. There is also a suggestion box in the fifth grade classrooms for the students. We review suggestions, some of which are fundraising ideas, fundraising days and overall school improvement.
The student council is also a duty. Two to three days a week, we wear our vest and helmet to patrol the school, closing doors and turning off lights in effort to conserve energy.
In addition, the student council is responsible for the daily announcements. We write them, they're reviewed by our teacher supervisors. We always include a fun fact of the day, make announcements for our school-wide behavior plan promoting safe, responsible, and respectful behaviors, and read off the high five nominations and winners to the high five wall of fame. We also announce student birthdays and any other important information needed by Mr. McKay. In February, we raised almost $1,300 for pennies for patients, a fundraiser that raises money for the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society. Each month, we have a different charity, and this year, some of the charities that we have supported have included Lux for Love, the Fund for Fall and Firefighters, the American Red Cross, Autism Speaks, and the Humane Society.
Some of our fund dates have included Red Sox Day, Bruins Day, School Spirit Day, Crazy Hair Day, Thai Day, Loop for Autism, and many more. Later this month, will be one of our personal favorites, Pyjama Day. Today, we have raised over $1,900 for these charities.
Any questions for us?
You know, you guys did an excellent job presenting, they were articulate, you could hear everything they were saying, that was a great job. I just wanted to ask, how was it giving the speech in front of classmates? Did you have a speech to get elected? How was it? It was okay? You didn't mind doing it? Did you read it or did you just get up and speak?
We had, we had a stand with us too.
You have a?
We had other classmates standing with us too.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, great, that'll be excellent.
One of the new things we've been taking on this year is for the Box grant, so we'll just fill it, listen up, talk a little bit about that, and I'm going to show a video first, is that?
You want it?
Sure.
Video or not?
Yeah.
Box is a unique before-school exercise program for elementary school children. Backed by the REBAC Foundation and supported by many REBAC athletes, it is a way to get kids moving and get their minds ready to learn. A simple 45 minutes of exercise before school has been proven to promote higher brain function, less ADHD, and provide many other health benefits. Studies have shown that children who exercise before school are happier and more confident in the classroom.
Staying fit, staying active can change your life, you know, being a professional athlete, I know the importance of being in shape.
It makes my brain get more energy.
Now I do really good in school. And you make me impressed sometimes.
You really have to eat healthy.
I don't think I will be a couch potato. I'm a very confident girl.
Box is an action program created and run by moms that is easy to implement and delivers amazing results. We are thrilled about bringing this program into our school so that children can move in the morning and when they walk into the classroom, they're ready for learning. To become a Box star in your community, go to foxkids.org to find out all the information you need to get started. Give your kids the best start. Bring Box to their school.
Good evening, I'm Lois Bissin, I'm the nurse here at the Hood School, and I just want to take two minutes of your time to tell you a little bit more about Box and what you might have seen on the presentation. Box is an acronym and it stands for Bring Our Kids Success. The idea behind Box is that if you provide a certain amount of physical exercise, you're not only exercising the body, but you're exercising the mind as well, and children will perform better academically. So that's the premise behind it. Now, in addition to the physical exercise, we also do a little small tidbit of nutrition information on the program here. We do it here, we started it in April, we'll run through the end of the year, and we're piloting it right now, so it's only two days a week. The first day is the little kids and the second day is the old kids. The program itself was created by a mom in Native, and she discovered that when she exercised, she feels much better and her mind works much better. So she thought, wouldn't it be great if this works for children? So she started a program for children, this elementary school in Native, and it was a huge success. Then she decided to bring it to REBAC, to see if they would support and sponsor with t-shirts for the program, and little did she know, REBAC was in perfect alignment with her ideas, and it got them to be sponsored, but they, it took off. Then Michelle Obama got involved in it, she heard about it, and with her effort to decrease the obesity in the country for children, she carried it even further and introduced grants. So how I come into the picture, as I heard about the program, I applied for the grant, was awarded the grant, and then with the help of Mr. Quinnlin, Mrs. Grant, who's in here somewhere, another teacher, Whitney Clary, and Robin Clark, our occupational therapist, we all came together and are providing the program for our children here with great success. So now, I would like to introduce our little chairs here, who are going to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what they're wearing. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Carissa. And during the nutrition portion, during the nutrition portion of this program, Mrs. Bissin taught us about real food and fake food. Real foods are the perfect fuel to make you go. They help you grow and stay healthy.
Hi, I'm Jordan. Real foods and fruits are vegetables, whole grains, nuts, beans, dairy products, and meats. Many foods you buy are processed in a factory and don't include fresh, real foods. We call this fake foods. Miss Bissin taught us an easy way to test if our foods are real or fake.
Hi, I'm Emily. When you want to test food, all you need is some water. If you put your food in water and, and you still want to eat it, it's, it is probably a real food. If you put food in water, it grosses you out. It prob, it is probably a fake food. Can you give?
Uh-oh, sorry. Let's do this first. Get it in there, dunk it, really get it, see what you're getting, come on. Is anything going to happen to that? Sure.
What is that?
Some salad.
Salad?
So, I mean, swirl that around. Watch it, all right. Anything happening? You think if you take that out of the water, you're still going to want to eat it? All right. What about this stuff?
I don't know.
Wait, can't anybody else put it in water?
I don't want to lose this stuff.
I'm going to eat this stuff.
That's enough.
All right. Got it. Swirl it around. Watch it get that, man. Ow.
She got snatch on the whole.
What do you got?
Who knows? Oh, that's, those were my hands.
What was it? What was it? You want some? Probably not. So this, this is a quick and easy way to figure out if you're eating, what do we call this? Real food or?
Fake food.
Fake food. You want to ask a question?
I have a question.
She has a question first, I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, she has a question.
She has a question, yeah.
Can you give us some examples of real foods and fake foods?
An answer, yeah. Hot dog, drink, something.
An answer, right? You're going to tell them if they're right.
Am I right?
Yeah.
I think I'm right.
You have a bread and jelly sandwich?
Yeah. Can you make a jelly sandwich?
White bread, right there with that donut.
Celery. We have, boy, I'm really glad we have those real foods and tools to start to improve any of this. What else would be fake, though? Carrot, yeah, real. Like, but a sausage would be fake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably a heavy roast would be, yeah. Cheez-Its and all those kind of cracker things, they'd be awful in wine.
He blocks a little bit too, because I know if I'm lucky, he can walk a little bit, because it's really not good.
It's a good way to learn.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you want to say?
We have more questions.
Just want one little phrase.
Remember, real foods make your body want to go, and fake foods make your body say whoa.
So how much is, what did the grant cover? What exactly, what is the current grant? You have a five-point.
It's a, it's a startup, it's a startup. It was $1,000 to begin, and then there was a second portion of another thousand, they gave you just two start teams to go. They are awarded those, and the charms are a huge hit. The kids love those. They really want the charms.
Thank you very much for applying for it.
Oh, my pleasure.
That's a really helpful job. Are you able to get every student participating exactly?
We sent a letter out and anybody that wanted to could, and we thought we were going to have to go to a lottery. We hit the max and didn't need to go to the lottery for the younger kids. The older kids, we still had a little bit of room left.
With it being the first time we were doing it and trying to get a feel for it, figure out the size of the gym and things like that, we capped it off at forty kids per class, per session. And we have forty kids for the younger and we have about twenty-eight for the older groups.
Looks like an excellent program. I could do without paying money.
My only hesitation was figuring that video out.
We could have edited that out. Sam was very good. And we clearly, you know, I believe we've, by the way, we just don't have enough recess time. We don't give the kids enough time to eat lunch. And, you know, anything we can do, I'd like to see recess and lunchtime expanded because I think kids, especially at the grade age, need that break during the day. And I think the exercise clearly helps.
Yes, it does. And if children have an opportunity to learn more about nutritional food and learn to exercise and love it, the idea is that they will continue to do that throughout life. And obesity rate for adults is just ridiculous. And children, the child rate is growing quickly. So if we can get them early and get them to love it, then it's...
It's a combination of not exercising, but eating. It's a combination.
Right.
Thank you very much, you guys. You did a great job. Thank you. Well done.
One of the things that we really, which our challenge this year is co-teaching and implementation of co-teaching. We have a co-teaching program at each grade level. I'd say that still has some areas of growth opportunity, but it was a nice place to start. So there's a video of Mrs. Hogan and Mrs. Crosby and some of their students talking about their experiences co-teaching. But I just wanted to complete the committee and bring it back to, two years ago, we really started talking about this co-teaching model. We started to use a data-driven decision-making model to really look at our growth opportunities as a school. And data analysis really marked some subgroups, concerns that really heightened our awareness around this. So two years ago, we did a pilot in fifth grade with Mrs. Wright and Mr. Quinn to try to see how that co-teaching model would work out. After a great first year, we went forward last year. We put that model in each grade level to varying degrees. And that was what we considered our launch. I think that next year, we're looking to change a few things around, meet some needs at different grade levels to a better degree and change some of the things that we've done. But I think it's a great program. I think it's great to reach the needs of all of our children, and it's been very successful. I'm actually looking forward to seeing our data this year when our test results come back to see the changes in our subgroups and dig a little deeper into that. I'm going to go through the definition that we use, the operation definition of co-teaching, because when you hear the video, the music plays a little bit over Mr. Crosby talking. So we go, we say that co-teaching is an instructional arrangement between a general education teacher and a special education teacher to deliver core instruction along with specialized instruction as needed to a diverse group of students in a single space. Co-teaching partnerships require educators to make joint instructional decisions and share responsibility and accountability for student learning. That's why we really wanted everyone to have that sense of shared responsibility for student learning in this school.
Hi, I'm Paula. And I'm a new student. And we are co-teachers in a fourth grade professional position. Here in the 14th, professional teaching. Co-teaching is described as any high-quality, quality professional working together in the same building. We go over each fault. At this time, I'm actually having a conversation with a student who is in the fourth grade professional position. We're hoping to have some course of general. There is a great debate. Also, there's a question for Abby. We have Mrs. Dedson, who's a speech learner and a pathologist. She comes in and was assessed on the BKA, how still we can target that instruction. We have Mrs. Robert from our probation. There was two hundred and one things to discuss. And Mrs. Sperry, reading professional teaching, presented to us to turn our readers the office. It was the opportunity to ask this, how do you feel co-teaching gives you the ability to...
It's good to have two teachers because it's comfortable to share ideas and experience. And also, each group can focus on different things than those kids you need. There's one teacher to break them if the student is confused. That's why I think co-teaching should be... That's why I think that there should be two teachers. Co-teaching helps me because it's better to have two teachers that can teach them in writing. Also, I don't have to explain how a law can teach two teachers. Lastly, co-teaching helps me because there's more connections to be, to be shared. This is why I think co-teaching helps me. I like co-teaching because it's easier to share ideas and experience. Also, if someone isn't paying attention, they can, then one teacher can get them refocused and distracted. Lastly, if you don't get something that another teacher can... There are reasons why I think co-teaching is a good idea because it's not just... And I, and I hope we can learn from each other. Next, I think co-teaching helps me because I can get more than one teacher. I have ideas that I have once. Also, if a teacher makes me not interested in something, another teacher will. And there are different strengths and weaknesses for each teacher. I like co-teaching because it helps me. It helps me like that. It helps me to make things up in my brain. It also combine everything. After that, it helps me because it keeps me clear. That's why I like co-teaching. I like co-teaching because it makes me feel comfortable sharing ideas and experience. Co-teaching helps me because two different teachers have different strengths. So for example, if Mrs. Crosby says something and not everybody gets it, then Mrs. Hogan connects it in a different way so we're all on the same page. Co-teaching helps because if Mrs. Hogan is teaching, also Mrs. Crosby can be playing the next lesson so we don't have to be here for one teacher to break, to play the next lesson. It also helps because it takes less time to be called on and read it so I can write more. And lastly, it helps because I can get two ideas on something from two different teachers. And co-teaching helps me because, because I'm confused when the user deals with it. And one teacher can break it down into parts. If I'm so confused, another teacher can explain it, say it in a different way. That way, I can think about what I'm hearing.
So I think it was very important for us to share the students' perspective on that chosen or researched from school, and that's how we came up with that idea. We asked them some basic questions. I heard the chuckle when the response to, as soon as my hand goes up, there's an actual person there and insert my time. The other one that I got a lot from was the question you ate when we met. We talked about how short the lines were in the classroom. So get those, that quick feedback and then we're back to teamwork. So the initial feedback has been great for parents and students and staff. As I had said, I think it's the great first year of our, continue to build on it.
Any questions? Some sort of questions?
If one last thing to share, and it's called Telagami. And I want to give a little credit to Mrs. Helen Kelly. She worked with Mrs. Gobain to virtually teach this lesson for all of us.
An insect is a cold-blooded animal. It also has three paws and two antennas. They have legs that are long and they're short.
Life cycle. A life cycle of an insect is the series of developmental stages an organism passes through on its way from birth to death. All living things have life cycles. The first stage is an egg stage. The egg is a mammal object laid by a female insect that contains eggs developing offspring. The darkling beetle lays about five hundred eggs at a time. They look like tiny white dots that are hard for predators to find. That is the egg stage.
The larva stage is the second stage of the darkling beetle. In the larva stage, the mealworm is molting and eating. In the larva stage, the darkling beetle looks like a worm.
The pupa stage is an active form of an insect that is dedicated to growth. It does not eat or move in this stage. When the mealworm is in the pupa stage, it's yellow. The front of this mealworm is big and the back is small. That is the pupa stage.
After the pupa stage comes the adult stage. The adult stage is the darkling beetle. It has antennas of brains. It has wings, but it doesn't need to fly. The darkling beetles have hairs on their legs that allow them to go up in many directions over different surfaces. In the adult stage, the beetles lay their eggs and carry on the life cycle.
The nymph stage is a young insect that looks like a small adult. When a milkweed bug is in the nymph stage, it doesn't have wings. It's also, it's missing some of its black and orange markings. That is the nymph stage.
The mealworm is the larva stage of the darkling beetle. The larva looks like a worm. It grows fast and sheds its exoskeleton. In the end stage, it sheds its skin and transforms into a pupa.
Incomplete metamorphosis.
Incomplete metamorphosis is a life cycle with three stages. Egg, larva, pupa, and adult. The darkling beetle is an example of an insect that goes through incomplete metamorphosis.
Complete metamorphosis.
Complete metamorphosis is a life cycle with four stages. Egg, larva, pupa, and adult. The darkling beetle is an example of an insect that goes through incomplete metamorphosis.
Example of complete metamorphosis. Complete metamorphosis is when an insect goes through four stages. These are the four stages. Egg, larva, pupa, and adult. A butterfly, ladybug, and beetle go through complete metamorphosis.
Metamorphosis is a life cycle with four stages. Egg, larva, pupa, and adult. It can also be three stages, which are egg, nymph, and adult. Then it is called incomplete metamorphosis. Metamorphosis is a clear change in the form of an animal as it grows into an adult, such as the change from a tadpole to a frog.
I just really like how the link at home is done with that. So that's something you create the classroom. I think the kids engage, have an activity, and then they get to draw the learning, to draw it together, and share with their families, kind of reinforce home, which is...
Any questions by those... Mrs. Gobain, this is how you come to work, right?
I was going to try to think of a way to, like, sky the mid, so you can ask questions on the presentation, but I thought that was going to be fine.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. O'Kay.
Thank you for coming and thanks for everything you do.
Mrs. Bisson, Mr. Quinlan, thank you very much. And all the students, you did a great, great job tonight. Thank you very much. Back to the present. Anybody wants to stay for the rest of the meeting? They can. I can imagine there's twenty-four of the Bruins on. If you want to stay, but you're welcome to stay. So we have a lot of far ahead of us. I'm going to move ahead of you, but now, sorry. We have time with us Steve McManus, who is the Chairman of the North Reading Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And Mr. McManus is going to make a presentation. Steve, why don't you just wait a minute until it gets quieter?
Thank you, officer.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We have... Okay. We also, we also have Valerie Adi, one here, and I have Mr. Director of Personnel Services. If you want to pitch in at all, just feel free to do so. Thank you. Feel free. This is...
Well, thank you. Thank you, School Committee, for having us here tonight. As Mr. Gnesias said, my name is Steve McManus. I'm the President of the North Reading Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which we'll refer to as the CPAC from here on in. I'm here to take, here today to talk about who we are, recent leadership changes to our CPAC, how we've been active in the past year and our goals for the upcoming school year. So just to give you an idea of what we do and what our responsibilities are to the community, we advise the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. We meet regularly with school officials. We participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's special education programs. And last but not least, we advocate for the appropriate supports and special education services necessary to meet the individual needs of children with disabilities living in the district and to ensure that each child receives the individual...
Then it is called incomplete metamorphosis. Metamorphosis is a clear change in the form of an animal as it grows into an adult, such as the change from a tadpole to a frog.
I just really like how the link at home is done with that. So that's something to create a classroom. I think the kids engage in that kind of activity, and then they get to draw the learning together and share with their families kind of reinforce home, which is.
Any questions? Mrs. Gobain, this is how you come to work, right?
I was gonna try to think of a way to like sky the minutes, ask questions on the presentation, but I thought that was going to be fine.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. O'Kay.
Thank you for coming, and thanks for everything you do.
This is this, Mr. Quinn, and thank you very much. To all the students, you did a great, great job today. Thank you very much. Back to the presentation. Anybody who wants to stay for the rest of the meeting, they can. I can imagine there's 24, and the room's on. If you want to stay, but you're welcome to stay. We have a lot of far attention going on. I'm gonna move ahead of you, now, too. We have time with us Steve McManus, who is the Chairman of North Reading Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And Mr. McManus is gonna make a presentation. Steve, why don't you just wait a minute until it gets quieter?
Yeah. Thank you all.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay. We also have Valerie Adi, one here tonight, who's the Director of Personnel Services. If you want to pitch in at all, just feel free to do so. Thank you. Feel free.
Well, thank you. Thank you, School Committee, for having us here tonight. As Mr. Venizia said, my name is Steve McManus. I'm the President of the North Reading Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which we'll refer to as the CPAC from here on in. I'm here today to talk about who we are, recent leadership changes to our CPAC, how we've been active in the past year, and our goals for the upcoming school year. So just to give you an idea of what we do and what our responsibilities are to the community, we advise the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. We meet regularly with school officials. We participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's special education programs. And last but not least, we advocate for the appropriate supports in special education services necessary to meet the individual needs of children with disabilities living in the district, and to ensure that each child receives the individualized support and special education that each child is entitled to under Massachusetts and federal law. So specifically, the population that we serve, our students that fall, that have been diagnosed with a disability, and that disability requires specialized instruction. So a brief history of what's been going on with our group in the past year and a half or so. In March of 2013, longtime President Kathleen Moline was ready to step down and hand over the reins, so to speak. So we elected new officers and had a governing body appointed. So in addition to myself, Pam McIntyre serves as Vice President, Vicky Labriola serves as the Secretary, and Tiffany Friedman serves as Treasurer. And the governing body are Kathleen, Moline, Donna Keller, sitting over here, and Linda Conchery. And this was a really exciting time for our CPAC because Kathleen did a great job for several years all by herself. So to have a group of parents that was ready to volunteer and be involved with the CPAC was a really nice turning point for us. So since that time, in March of 2013, we've been very active as a group. We're required by the state to, once a year, put on a presentation called Basic Rights for Parents of Children with a Disability. So we did that presentation in March of last year, and then in late spring, early part of the summer, I served as the parent representative on the interview committee for the open position of Director of Pupil Personnel Services. In the fall of 2013, last fall, I attended a regional CPAC event, which was hosted by the Methuen CPAC. And this was very important to us, to our group, to network and branch out and be tied in with the local CPAC community. It's great to network, get ideas, learn what other CPACs are doing to serve their communities. And on top of that, Pam, our Vice President, attended a similar event hosted by North Andover in March of 2014. In addition to this, I go to the monthly meetings of the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, and once again this spring, I was the parent representative for the opening for the Director of Pupil Personnel Services. I also act as sort of a liaison for parents of children in the special ed community who have questions about their rights and procedures and can contact me confidentially if they have a question about a policy or procedure. I work on their behalf with the school district. So a big focus, one of our goals going into this school year, was to sponsor and put on programs for a wide range of children and disabilities. We really wanted to focus these programs to be parent education, and like I said, address a wide range of student disabilities. We cover, you know, the students in our population are everywhere, from preschool and high school, and then even some transition period and beyond. So we have quite a scope that we address. To this end, we hosted a series of programs this school year, which the CPAC hadn't really done for a long time, and we were really excited about. The first was in February, we hosted Fran Hinchey, who is well-known in the special ed community. She worked as a special ed teacher for many, many years, and then worked as a home therapist with the North York Consortium. And she came to our group and did a presentation about toilet training for children with special needs. And so our goal for turnout for this event was 10 parents, and we had 12 show up. So we were really happy with that as a first-time event to exceed our goal. It was really nice, and it was a great back-and-forth discussion, and Fran already has volunteered to come back next year, so we're very excited for that. In March, we hosted Dr. David Stember, a local psychologist, who gave a presentation titled "Childhood and Adolescent Anxiety: A Parent's Guide." And our group decided that for an event like this, covering childhood anxiety, you know, that's really something that most parents can relate to at some level. So we didn't only publicize this, or specifically invite parents with special ed students, but we opened it up to the North Reading general community. And our goal for this event was 50 adults, or 50 parents, and we had 62 attend at the middle school in March, which was fantastic. We were really happy with that turnout. It was a great presentation by the doctor, and there was a great Q and A session afterwards where we literally got kicked out of the building, because we probably still would be there if we hadn't left. So we were very happy with that, and he's also offered to come back next year. So we already have some programming lined up for next year, which is really nice. And we rounded out our year of programming just last week, once again, with the required yearly Basic Rights presentation that we did. So we've done, I feel, a nice job with reaching out to parents and making ourselves visible in the community. So looking ahead to next year, we have a couple of parents that have volunteered to put together a CPAC website, which we think will be great to stay in communication with parents and also share resources about events that are going on, not only in North Reading, but with local organizations. I heard you mention eMark before. That's obviously a route that we know very well, so we could help promote their events. We also are in the process of joining the MasPAC, which is a statewide organization that provides information, training, and networking opportunities to Massachusetts Parent Advisory Councils and professionals who work with these parents. So we feel, once again, that would be a nice way for us to be involved on a regional level and be tied in with what other communities are doing to be effective. As I mentioned, we want to bring Fran Hinchey and Dr. David Stember back next year, and we are gonna have Fran back, but this time invited up, open up the invitations to the general population like we did with Dr. Stember, because her toilet training methods are very effective for children with special needs, but really work with any child, and obviously that's something that they'll go through at one point or another. So last but not least, I'd like to thank Kathy Willis and her staff for their support. In addition, I'm happy to say that we've had a really collaborative and positive relationship with the People Personnel Office. So thank you very much to Valerie Flynn and her staff for their support and guidance, and sort of last but not least, but thank you for the School Committee for having us and for all the work that you do on behalf of children, families, and North Reading.
Steve, thank you very much. You're clearly taking a lot of time and very committed to this, and we really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. It's a team effort. Some members of our group here, not everybody could make it regretfully, but like I said, it's really been nice to have a group of parents that have been heavily involved.
Questions or comments?
How do you interact with each school or with the People Personnel Office? I mean, is there other guidelines that you have to follow, or, you know, how do you work with principals, et cetera, in the ways we work to support students with special needs?
That's a good question. Most of the work that we do is directly with the PPS Office. You know, that's kind of one of our ongoing goals, is to work more directly with the principals and figure out the best way that we can communicate and be a presence in the School Committee. So, I mean, I've worked with different principals, you know, through the interviewing for the PPS Office, mostly. So we're out there, but we're increasing our level of communication as well.
The other question is, you didn't talk about funding at all. You know, one of the critical needs for the local districts is for the state or federal government to provide more funding so we can provide more programs, et cetera, for students with disabilities. Are you getting involved with the state at all in terms of trying to drum up support and more funding please, or is that not part of your charter?
We haven't yet. I could see us doing that in the future. I mean, obviously, it's an issue that we're close to. I know a lot of us work on the individual level with advocating for, you know, there's been changes, for example, at the state level with the autism insurance over the last few years. And I know a number of us are involved on that individually, not necessarily part of the CPAC. It's another thing for us to consider going forward. Appreciate your suggestion.
Steve, I was curious. So the Basic Rights presentation, what was the turnout like on that?
Last.
That would be applicable to everybody that's in the program, right?
It is. Last year, we had one person came.
Really?
Whose wife made him come because he and I are friends, and she said, "You better get out there and support Steve." This year, we had three or four, and it's one of those that's.
It just seems to me that's something that every parent would want to at least stop a little bit. Because you're playing a critical role in that link between schools, especially before the student gets into the schools. I agree with Jerry. It's something that'd be a critical presentation every year, and that gets everybody kind of on the same page, because they now have someone they can go to, you know, to say, what can we achieve, what can we achieve with the program, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, my take on that is that, you know, maybe low turnout means that one way to look at it is people are overall very satisfied with their services. You know, parents of special education students go to so many meetings, and I think always feel very tied in with the staff and the principals, that the people that tend to come to those Basic Rights presentations are maybe things who are new to the process, and, you know, it's such a deer-in-the-headlights experience that they want some guidance. But at the same time, the guidance is pretty easily available, not just at that meeting, but through outside resources and working with the PPS Office already, so.
The good news is you quadrupled your attendance from the first day to the second.
Yeah, so we keep up that trend, you know. Next year, we'll have 12.
With the website also, that'll be a way of extending that information. That'll be there on a frequent basis, where people have a place to go to get information. I think that'll be a great upgrade.
Yeah. Which is gonna be one of the first things that goes up there, you know, because it's such an important issue, but it's tough to, you know, it's tough to find childcare, and it's tough to make another meeting, so.
Just one other question that anybody can answer. When you go to the regional meetings, do you come away with anything as far as comparable, you know, service satisfaction by members or with the district?
Oh, absolutely. There's so much knowledge to be gained by attending these events, because it's a sharing of best practices, and obviously, we're somewhat in infancy stage for us. And so for us, there was a lot of advice given for some of the more established PACs. And obviously, we're a small town, small community, small community of folks with kids with special needs. So when you go to these events, you hear about, you know, how they can just grow and scale, and they're willing to, I spoke with the folks from Wilmington, who are just so happen to have an event scheduled, a resource fair scheduled. So I disseminated that to Steve, and he sent that out, so we can all share ideas and events. So it's a great opportunity to get involved and to learn a lot more about other CPACs and what they're doing.
Steve, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could just say, that is one primitive, very basic thing. We're a small group. We're just starting. I do have to say, they may be small, but they certainly make up for that in enthusiasm, commitment, and dedication, and the desire to grow and do even more. And it's very impressive, and it's also very heartwarming to a special ed director to have such a group be so invested in doing this. So I commend all of them, and I thank them for the warmth that you welcomed me with and including me in so many things, so.
Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Okay, next agenda, we're going to jump back to a report from the Superintendent of the school building project.
Thank you. The last Secondary School Building Committee meeting was held on April 29, beginning at 5:30 PM. And in terms of the construction update, I will defer to Mr. Venizia or Mrs. Avriano or Mr. Bowers to talk a little bit about what was discussed. So much has changed since the last meeting, but any information that you have on construction and show.
Good for Janie, jump right in. They're in the building more than the contractors.
Basketball hoops are in.
Yes. The biggest thing that we really need. Basketball.
The backboards are up, the hoops are up.
If nothing else happens, we're in good shape. Go ahead.
The lighting in the gymnasium is also going in. Peating. The floors in the academic wing, in the hallways and classrooms are all in. A lot of the caseworks are in, in the classrooms and the teachers' rooms, setting up where the desks are laying out.
The labs.
Yep, and then labs. They have permanent power on. Lights are, I believe.
The lights are on.
And they're testing the water treatment, and having that continuing conditions going on.
Well, I missed last week.
Oh, my God.
And if you missed a week, you missed a lot. The chiller was connected up the last I was in, so it was just connected up. They were hanging the clouds in the auditorium, the ceiling, the posted clouds. The ceiling is actually black. It's all painted black, and there's wood panels that fill the ceiling area. They're working the stage equipment, the weights and counterweights and all of that operation. Very shortly, they will remove the platform, the temporary scaffolding that's been put in over the entire auditorium, so that they can put lifts in there. They need a flat floor rather than a soap floor that we have with seats going. So that will all come out around the first of June. I think that's it. It's awesome. There's no question about being awesome. I keep using that word, because that's the only descriptor of it. The kitchen is essentially complete with tile on the floor, on the walls, the waterproofing in first, and then the tile floor. There's a refrigerator and a freezer, walk-in freezer, refrigerator. They have the grills in, all that's going in. Landscaping is going on, straining out the drainage and all behind the school, the parking area. We have grass on the berm.
They poured the foundation to the team room.
They did.
The team room down at the turf field, which should be down by the.
Again, we're overly excited about this project. I know you are, too. You gotta be when you see it, because we've been so involved in this for so long. Cliff and Janie go to the construction meeting at the construction trailer every Thursday morning. After that, they tour the building, and I mean, they tour. They go through every square inch of that building. That's how committed they are to this project. It's unbelievable. But it's really exciting, because, you know, we go back to when they were digging a hole over there in the back of the middle school, and now when you go in there, it's clearly in the finished stages, and everything that Janie and Cliff just talked about. Outside, they're literally in the back parking lot now. They're digging the islands, putting the granite curbing in, getting the parking lot ready for September. And that building, I'm telling you right now, is gonna be ready when school opens on September 8. That building is gonna be ready. It's gonna be fully functional. As they suggested, the team room, which is down by the turf field, they started working on that today. So we're on schedule with that building on June 26, moving out of the middle school. And the superintendent, the principals will be getting ready to move the middle school into the high school, the high school into the new high school. And then on the 27th of June, we'll be tearing apart that middle school and getting that renovated till the fall of September in 2015. That's gonna be ready and open for the middle school. So we're really excited about it.
Middle school work will begin on the day after school closes.
Three things. We forgot to congratulate Cliff on his hard quad victory, to win another three years on the committee, although I do want to thank him for his commitment for serving another three years.
He does a lot of it. But he's so popular that everyone's afraid to run against him.
Right.
Three terms now, and nobody's running against him. Don't tell me about it. I know all about it.
Two other things, too. August 17th is kind of the unofficial turnover date for the school. That's 97 days away when the school is supposed to be completed. The other thing for me is the sacrifice that the town made to allow us to build this school. We're spending a lot of money, and it's on the backs of everybody who lives in this town.
They know, they got the tacticals.
Exactly. But I can't wait until the town gets to come into the school and see the school, because it is, you just can't believe it. I mean, I've been in three or four times with Jerry on our Saturday tours, and Jerry's a great tour guide, but I just can't, every time I go in there, it's mind-boggling what that school is when you compare it to what we have today. And every single facet of it is astounding to me how great the project is.
Yeah, when you see the science lab, you're trying to be blown away. I'm telling you right now, so.
I've said it at several meetings now, and one of the things that the town should be very pleased with is that the quality of the design. I spent a whole career in the business of designing and constructing facilities. And this design is a quality design, and the construction is a quality construction. We're getting the right materials. They're not gold-plated, but they have a high point. right materials, they're, they're not gold plated but they have the high quality that you need for the long run and they're being put together by professionals, they're going together very, very well, something we're going to be able to be proud of for the long period.
All right, turn it back to superintendent.
You've pretty much covered the whole report, I'll just say.
I know some details you wanted to.
There are some details. In terms of the design update, the focus has been on furniture, fixtures and equipment. The designer has issued purchase orders up to the approved dollar amount that was approved at the last SSBC meeting. There was also a summary that was reviewed that provided detail regarding the base budget and the additional items for the FFNE list and their cost over the base budget, that total was $437,849. Following a lengthy discussion, the SSBC eliminated the costs associated with the purchase of new copiers which totaled about $132,000 and voted to approve an additional $305,786 from the contingency fund to purchase the needed FFNE item, so that was very positive.
Kevin, if I could just, you know, one of the things with the furniture, furniture, fixture, fixture furniture and equipment is the state allocates this $1,200 per student and has not increased that in.
Ten years.
Ten years. The average school is spending about $1,600 to $1,700 per student in this category, we're going to commit at around $1,500 or a little under $1,500, but the $1,200 number is all the state will, the MSBA will approve, so if we went in with a number larger than that we could have jeopardized the whole project, so we have to go in with that $1,200 number times the number of students they say we are going to have in these two schools, so that, that's why we're on budget on that, on that item.
And I want, can't emphasize enough, we're not coming back and asking, we're going for more money, it's not making out of contingency.
Yes, money that's already approved. And along that, those same lines, change order 15 was reviewed and approved for a total of $149,917.87, again, coming out of approved funds for the project. The move for bid was awarded to Wakefield movers, moving and storage out of Raleigh, Mass. There were three bidders with Wakefield coming in as the highest but one bidder was eight minutes late with submitting the bid, so they were eliminated and the other bidder could not satisfy all of the terms of the bid. I'd just like to note though that Wakefield handled the move that was associated with the modular classrooms at the middle school several summers ago now and the district was very pleased with their performance, so we're going to be very happy to be working with Wakefield movers again. Meetings with Wakefield about the move have been held with the middle school staff, the high school staff and the central office staff. Multiple meetings have been taking place regarding the relocation of the middle school to the old high school. The middle school must be vacated on June 24th which is the last day that students are attending, this is a little bit of an accelerated timeline if you may not have been aware of. But we also, the central office needs to vacate on June 24th following the dismissal of students and the central office will be located to the old high school the days directly after the students leave the middle school so that we don't miss a beat with business office providing all the services that we do to the entire school district. In fact, they will be up and running in their new space by Friday, June 27th, so in two and a half days we'll have a new office open running without missing a beat. They do think at this point that our central office will be relocated to.
To the old high school library.
In the interim.
In the interim, that day and a half to two and a half days, the backup plan, that should not work, is actually the town hall, Plan 05, there'll be stations set up for us to continue to do any of this.
So we have a Plan B and a Plan C. The next regular meeting of the secondary school building committee is scheduled for tomorrow evening beginning at 5:30 PM in the high school modular faculty.
Thank you, Kevin, and again I can't credit, it was administrative, so not Mike Farley, Kathy Willis, Kathy O'Farley and John Bernard, the principals of middle school and high school because this is a monumental task that we want to take and, you know, getting there, we are getting there, there's a lot of big moves that are going to take place but so far everything we had just the way we wanted. Anybody have any questions?
I couldn't get tours to the incoming middle school, the middle school stores as far as what they're doing for traditional high school, proximity is a transition to make jump over to the existing high school for classes, are they going to be toured for the summer or?
I'm going to let Kathy answer that because she's already got some plans.
There will, there will not, there will be tours for the students, the high school students that will be going to the new facility and there'll be some tours taking place this spring, or visitations I should say, for middle school students to the old high school. In terms of the public, we won't be providing any tours during the summer because we're still trying to complete the project, complete the punch list, get moved in, get all of the teachers' classrooms set up and be ready for the students when they arrive in September. We will get settled in the building, when I say we, it'll be the administrators, the teachers, the staff, as well as the students, and then we'll put a, a schedule into place for the grand opening, the ribbon cutting and then tours for the entire community, so all of that information is in the process and we'll get that information out.
We're going to try to get the students activated first, obviously.
It's very exciting.
Thank you, Kevin. Next on the agenda, we have a food service workers contract agreement that's been negotiated by Cliff Bowles and Mike Farley, the agreement has already been ratified by the food service workers, Council 93, Local 1703 from Aspen and the school department is entering into this agreement and I'm going to ask Mr. Farley before we take any motions to approve this agreement to just summarize it.
Great, thank you. So we have reached an agreement, it is a one-year agreement and the reason behind that is certainly we've been evaluating and reviewing the food service program over the last year and the management company proposal that was also bid out this year in order to the existing contractor, company manager company which is Chartwell's, their agreement got extended to for an additional year, so we all felt it was important that these two agreements were kind of in line in terms of the timeline, so we came to an agreement with one year. Because of the year agreement, there was actually no major language changes, that's, you know, part of this agreement and it did involve a 2% cost of living adjustment and we'll continue to, to work with the food service team over the next, you know, several months, we actually, I'll be meeting with a subcommittee of, of their team to talk about, you know, ideas on how we can improve the participation and performance in the program and we'll be continuing to work with Chartwell's officials to bring their ideas, the creative innovative ideas that they hope to capture next year moving forward with certainly high school being an opportunity to come in and offer new ideas to bring, you know, most of those, you know, ideas generate revenue to fruition, so it's, it's a one-year agreement with a 2% cost of living adjustment.
Thank you, Mike, any questions, Mike? Okay, there are no questions, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the electric bargaining agreement via between the authority school department and Aspen Council 93, Local 1703 food service employees as outlined by Mr. Farley.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bowles, a second by Ms. Araketti, is there any further discussion? Karen, also favorably say aye.
Aye.
A motion not motion carried by vote of aye, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, minutes approved, we have minutes from the regular open session meeting of April 7th, 2014 and I'd ask for minutes of review for a motion approved.
I agree, the minutes found no issues with the minutes, so I move to approve the regular session minutes from April 7th, 2014.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Webster and a second by Ms. Araketti, approve the minutes from April 7th, 2014, any further discussion? Karen, also favorably say aye.
Aye.
Approved by vote of aye, nothing, we also have the regular open session minutes on April 15th, 2014.
I'm making the same motion to approve the minutes from April 15th, 2014.
I don't have them.
We don't have them?
No. I just said April 7th.
Good thing I didn't say it, right?
I don't have them.
We'll do them at the next meeting, so table those.
So we don't have a motion?
No.
All right, budget update, I'm going to ask Mr. Farley, please give us a FY14 budget update as we near the end of the fiscal year.
Correct, so in your packet this evening was the May 2000, fiscal 2014 budget report, essentially we have less than two months to go in fiscal year 2014, so what we're really involved in at this point is preparing to ensure there's a smooth closeout of fiscal year 14, we're going to continue to monitor the, the major drivers of what we've been dealing with throughout the fiscal 2014, what you've been hearing me present on a monthly basis, certainly even need to monitor special education costs, we continue to do that over the course of the next six weeks or so, the additional costs that have arisen, as you know, we've been able to absorb those costs within the existing fiscal 14 budget because of the prepayments that were made with carryover funds in fiscal 13, some additional revenue received from the state, so we'll, we'll certainly monitor those costs closely. Homeless transportation is one, one item that is reflecting a deficit, we've talked about this in the past, there's been some additional need to meet that, you know, our state mandates in this area and these costs have risen over budgeted amounts. Certainly, you know, we're behind the, the heating season is behind us, certainly reflecting today's weather, so, you know, because we were conservative in budgeting our utilities and our, our special heating electricity, we certainly anticipate in our projections at this point that there'll be funds available to repurpose elsewhere. We just talked about the food service agreement, the food service program is another area that we've had to certainly monitor closely this fiscal year, we do anticipate, as been the case in previous years, that there will be a need to subsidize the program with additional general fund operating dollars, so we'll certainly pay, pay close attention to that, that's certainly reflected in our projections. Because of that, we've reached an agreement with the food service union as well as we've extended the agreement for Chartwell's for an additional annual year, I've asked, I've asked the Chartwell's officials to come and present at the next meeting on May 27th to the full school committee to discuss their action plan to capture additional sales and increase participation that was included in their proposal, so they'll have an opportunity to come and present and have an opportunity to ask, ask questions at the May 27th meeting. Certainly as we approach the final quarter of the fiscal year, we're going through the process, business office staff is reviewing all the purchase orders and trying to close out open encumbrances, but certainly at this point only essential, you know, emergency purchases are being, are being made as we prepare to close the fiscal year on the expense side. On the payroll side, the majority of personnel costs have remained within budgeted ranges and we certainly, it does appear that we'll be able to identify funds both on the expense and in the salary accounts that will be used to carry over into fiscal 15, you may recall when we have adopted the fiscal 15 budget, it was predicated upon our ability to identify at minimum about $150,000 in carryover funds that are going to be used to prepay special education tuition, so based on our projections at this point in the year, obviously with six, about six weeks remaining, we are expecting to meet that carryover amount, we actually hope to, to be able to exceed that amount at this point, we will continue to monitor and reduce expenses closely, you know, my, my experience has been even though there's six weeks remaining, this can still be unexpected and things that will come up in the next six weeks, but I think we're in a good position now as we, to close out of this fiscal year.
Thank you, Michael, any questions or comments from the panel?
Food services, are we still going in the right direction in terms of selling more lunches, bringing in more revenue?
We, we are trending slightly upwards on mail, on mail counts, it's going various amongst level, I believe at the elementary level, it's certainly actually up from prior years, at the middle school level it's actually slightly down from prior years and the high schools at all levels, so we are seeing, but overall district-wide, I mean, on mail counts and our, our sales on a monthly basis are higher by year.
Thanks, Mike. Next on the agenda, staff, any changes?
None at this time.
And bits and donations?
None at this time.
Do you have any at this time? We do have a subcommittee reports, we had a policy subcommittee meeting that was held on April 30th, 2014 and I'd ask Mr. Bowles and Ms. Sibriano to report on that meeting.
Last meeting, we figured out there's use of building grounds policy and also a policy on Facebook and social networking websites and we expect to have a presentation the next meeting.
Karen, I think Ms. Araketti is also involved working with the committee on that.
Anything further, Karen?
No, I made a presentation and I'm glad we have an opportunity for the technology staff, high school teachers, but hopefully we can add something to that, so it's a complicated topic and I expect that there are several school districts that have policies in place and they're all different and we're all learning about how to have a good policy on this, so.
Let's do it right. Finance planning team also met on Friday, May 9th and Mr. Webster was the chairman and Mr. Bowles, the vice chair, will not even make that, so Ms. Araketti sat in on that meeting and this is a meeting that again we have every couple of months, the chairs of the boards, finance committee, school committee, board of selectmen and the administrators sit down and get together and try to work collaboratively on different issues including budgeting.
So I just think last Friday, Friday's closing meeting, please report, we have no outstanding issues related to the fiscal year 14, but those are all up to date except the legal bills which will soon to be resolved based on continued litigation. On the revenue side, our motor vehicle excise, our tax is actually exceeding the budget which is nicely surprised, there was some discussion on what to do regarding whether any transportation, whether they pay excise off their vehicles or their parks here, so that was up again, as many of the members may recall, runners meant trucks but discussion had, it was various precedent, so that was great. There was some discussion about the SSIB transition, North Reading as we know sends a couple of students to SSIB, we received a bill for charges of $17,000 versus $40 per student.
Per student.
So, and, and so this is, this is an interesting case, this is a total of $100,65,824, so we were notified that the town will have to pay tuition going forward including transportation, so this is brought up, this will come, come back again, I'd ask either Michael or Kathy who know much more about this to explain, I know the latest of all, but I think they can play it on.
Yeah, because I'd be curious about that myself, yeah, the transportation aspect.
And anything else, I can keep that. I never go to these meetings.
You took this pretty seriously. That looks like a long list, it's getting late, but go ahead.
Come on, it was very meticulous.
It's very good, we're supposed to summarize.
Okay, missed one. Okay, so the other discussion we had was around the elder van which will need to be replaced, also we talked a little bit about the capital fund and then the capital plan to school van, we voted to replace that, Marcus was handling that, we have school building updates and the board of selectmen also talked about reappointing Shannon Natus who is sitting there at the building committee, there will need to be a joint appointment for that, we really need to schedule that, so that's it.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Kathy, you want to add something on the appointment?
Yes, please, the, the new chair of the board of selectmen, Chairman McIsary, has asked that there be a joint meeting scheduled for Monday, May 19th.
Yeah, next Monday.
And that's next Monday and they would start at 6:30 for the joint meeting, so if it's agreed, they would like to know if that's agreeable with the school committee and if so we will get that posted.
All right, and again, thank you very much, we do have some subcommittee meetings scheduled, the athletics subcommittee is tomorrow at 12:30, evaluation subcommittee May 16th at 10:45, policy subcommittee May 21st at 9, and the finance planning team June 13th, April 15th. Administrator report.
We have an administrator report.
Oh, you do?
Yes, a short one, but is it, am I to assume that we should post that May 19th meeting?
I'll do it that night.
At 6:30?
You guys will leave it, okay. All right, thank you, thank you very much for coming and thank you even more for staying, it's never happened before, all right, thank you.
May 19th, the executive, what is that name? And the joint meeting.
Go ahead.
The 19th is okay?
Yep.
So May 19th is a joint meeting? Okay, very short administrator report, in your packet attached is the commissioner's weekly update from May 9th, if you turn to the back page of that, I wanted you to see the update on Park and Park versus MCAS. MCAS choice for 2015. I'm just going to point out a couple of pieces of information, so it's on the backside of the commissioner's weekly update. Moving to the second paragraph, the commissioner highlights that next year, we will move to an operational administration of Park as part of the two-year test driver of Park. The commissioner will provide school districts with the opportunity to choose whether to administer Park or MCAS in their own district in the spring of 2015. A district must choose the same assessment for all of its schools, and district selecting Park will be able to decide whether or not to administer the online or the paper version of the assessments.
Can I ask you a question or not?
Yes.
What's the school committee's role in this? Is it a superintendent role, or, because it almost sounds like a policy issue to me. I'm just...
Well, let me just tell you that there are different conference calls and informational sessions that are taking place. You recall that I let you know that MAS C had sponsored a couple of Park presentations. We're going to be participating in a conference call with the Department of Ed on May 23rd. My professional association, the Association of School Superintendents, will host a workshop on Monday, May 19. Patrick and I are attending that. We're also going to be part of the conference call on the 23rd. All of our administrators in the district are participating in that conference call. And then at my executive institute in the summer, there's going to be another presentation for, and at the MAS Spring Conference, there's going to be a presentation on May 22nd. So there's lots of presentations. In terms of the school committee role, as with any decision that has to do with assessment, I think it's important for the superintendent to bring the information back, and we collaboratively decide, you know, I need to make a recommendation to you, but then we discuss, and we talk about what it is we want to do as a district moving forward, whether we want to continue with MCAS for one more year or participate in the park. And of course, following all of these presentations, it was my intention to bring to you at the May 27th meeting, the information that we gather regarding making the decision between MCAS and Park. And if you look at the front page of this handout that I gave to you, there is a timeline regarding making the decision. And you can see that we need to make an early decision by June 30. And if we don't make a decision by June 30, there'll be an opportunity to make a decision in the fall by October 1st. But if we choose to move with Park, that will only be pending availability if we make the decision in October.
Here's why I ask. The school committee voted on race, whether we wanted to participate in race at the top or not.
Right.
I would assume that the school committee should be voting on whether or not we adopt the park. I see it as a similar...
This isn't an adoption, this is making the choice for which task will be, this is still, we're still trying Park out.
Still a task.
This year and next year.
But I guess my question is, I would see the school committee taking a vote on that, and Karen can read that we won't take a vote on it.
No, that's not true, because when we participated in the field test this year, you took some action on whether or not you would have the middle school and the high school participate, and whether or not the batch and the little school would participate.
So when the time comes, we're going to have a presentation.
I would, yeah, it's my idea, I would think it's a good idea.
Conceivably, conceivably, after two years of this, it's possible that they may say Park isn't the way to go, right?
No chance.
I'm just saying conceivably.
There's about as much chance of that.
But they're still referring to it as a task.
The legislature still needs to vote whether or not they're going to switch from the task to Park.
It's a mandate, so it's implementation of a mandate, and there's a choice. It's actually not, I mean, honestly, I don't think the superintendent has to come to it or not, kind of script. But I would want, I would want to hear from MAS C whether they're quite the same experience.
Just from, just one thing, from, I mean, I think it's critical. The issue that I'm having with it is if we, if we move to Park this year, just for this year, how does that, the impact that has on the teacher evaluation, the educator evaluation system that we have in place now, and also, how do we correlate the Park results to MCAS results?
Well, you know we're not getting any results from Park this year.
Right, but I'm talking about next year.
Next year, they are going to release results, and there is an equate, a statistical equating measure that they're going to use to get the growth, the student growth percent up. You know that that is the metric that's being used to determine whether or not students are making adequate progress in the classroom, and that's the metric that will be used in the educator evaluation system.
So they do have a formula.
Not necessarily draw results.
They have a formula in place now to correlate the growth.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we will get results back if we choose to go with Park next year or the typical MCAS results.
Kathy, anything else on the administrative report?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned, okay. All right, in addition, I have something on the administrative report, and that's my first meeting and first day as chairman. I'm not real happy about this, but unfortunately, we have received in the last 10 days or so, a letter from the superintendent indicating to the committee that it's her intention to retire in the fall of this year, sometime in September, October. And I'm going to ask Kathy to say a few words, but in light of this, I'm going to ask the committee to step forward, we're going to look for two people in the committee to form essentially a subcommittee to try to establish a process to go out and look for a succeeding superintendent. What I'd ask them to do, if we can try to do a little more to do this, is to come back to us sooner rather than later, maybe even next Monday, meeting number 29, with an outline of a process, and then we're going to have a discussion on that particular process, or the recommendation of the two members, and see if we can establish the most efficient and expeditious and best way to find a success of the Catholic. So before I turn it over to Kathy, again, I think Mr. Webster and Ms. Araketti were both interested, and so I'd ask the other committee, does anyone have any objection to that? If not, I'd ask Mel and Pam to come back next Monday with a pulse of thrust to move forward. And I'm going to turn it over to Kathy for her remarks, and then the committee members will have enough to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Venetia. It was with mixed emotions that I submitted my letter of intent to retire to the school committee, and we haven't set an actual date yet of when that retirement will become effective. We are talking about October. From the moment I was offered the position in 2010, it has been my dream job. I've enjoyed every minute, and it's the best professional decision I've made in my 37 years as an educator. I've been blessed by a supportive community that values education. The people who are elected to run this town are committed, they're collaborative, and they truly care about the students, the faculty, staff, administration, and education. Our parents are truly partners with our schools. We have a very talented, dedicated, and hardworking faculty and staff. My administrative council, made up of my principals and my central office, are true leaders in the field of education. Students are the reason we come to work every day. They are the focus of every decision we make, and we are so very proud of them. I'd like to thank the school committee for their unwavering support, guidance, sense of humor, and commitment to education. We have a lot to still accomplish in the next five months, so we won't miss a beat. I will work with the school committee to implement their plan going forward and provide a seamless transition for the next superintendent of North Reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Obviously, Kathy's going to be with us for a few more months, so she's not leaving tonight or tomorrow, but I'd ask the members if they had anything that they wanted to say. I'll just stop at your meeting and work out where down if you have any comments at all. You don't have to.
Is there any, is there any way for us to make a statement? Can we like vote her, like vote that we will accept the law?
We could do that.
I'm going to the legislature tomorrow to introduce a bill that requires that you're at least 65 to be free to retire from a superintendent of school position, and then make it retroactive.
That would give her another 20 years.
At least.
I think you're talking 75. 75?
Anything further? I mean, again, this isn't farewell tonight, you're just...
No, it's just, this is a revolting development.
Boy, then you'd date yourself for that.
Yeah, I like that.
The life of a ride.
I know what it means. You know, we've been, Jerry's right, tonight's not the night, but we've been very lucky in this town. We've had three superintendents in the last 49 years, and now Kathy's really bringing our average down. But a lot of other communities and school districts have gone through superintendent after superintendent after superintendent. I just consider as fortunate to get four years of Kathy's expertise in town. Karen?
There's so much to be said, we'll set a much later date, however, I would like to say that we're so much better off having you here and your leadership, and I'm so glad that we've set that kind of precedent. I'll probably be saying the Kathy precedent, who comes next. But I want to thank you for keeping students in the forefront of our minds and making our decisions. It's very evident to me that's what motivates you, you care deeply about your students, your staff, your team. Team is what, you're part of our team as well, and we really appreciate you. So please don't leave until the last last.
And after hearing that, I just want to make it clear, and I know there'll probably be rumors out there, but Kathy has, and I don't normally speak with the attack meeting, but I think I can on this, Kathy has our 100% support. We're all regret that this has happened, she's done a tremendous job, and again, you know, we're hudders today, but this is a personal decision that she made, so I think the thing we have to do next is to put in the first year, if we can find a replacement for Kathy, which isn't going to be easy, so we're working that side next month.
I think that's a critical thing. I think the one thing that makes me confident is we've proven that with our last election, we made an excellent choice, and I think we'll make an excellent choice again for our next superintendent. And I feel confident we've got a great award that's collegial and always worked closely with us, our attendants, and I think we'll be able to find a great candidate. I'm not saying the candidate is good as Kathleen Willis, but I'm saying somebody who can continue what she started, especially what Karen mentioned, building a team and some of the things she's done in terms of really making a professionally run organization in a way she mentors her administrative staff.
And all she has to do is say the word that she's changed her mind and she's back whatever we're doing?
Yes.
She's back, okay? All right. We'll pick her up. Thank you, Ryan. We'll wrap it up here. We have meetings scheduled for May 27th at 7 o'clock, it's a regular meeting.
It should say Tuesday.
Was that the holiday?
Yeah.
The day after the holiday.
Tuesday, May 27.
She retires and she's getting the dates wrong. Unbelievable.
Monday, June 2nd is town meeting, we'll meet at 6:30 prior to town meeting. Monday, June 9th is a regular meeting at Town Hall, Room 14. And then again, on May, June 23rd, probably our last meeting before the summer, and that'll be at Town Hall, Room 14. So, nobody else has anything? I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion by Mr. Bowles, Mr. Sembriano, there is no discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried by vote of aye.